Hi, good afternoon and welcome to the PG CPS Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group Meeting for October 6, 2021. My name is Pamela Boozer-Struther and I'm the Chair of this work group and the Board of Education Member for District 3. Today, we are addressing the topics of food services, food waste and composting materials, waste and recycling among our topics for this work. We've been meeting for quite a few months at this point and we are moving towards the operations discussions of PG CPS around carbon emissions and the environmental impacts of the system. And as we look at our future action plan, moving into our agenda, I'd like to officially call the meeting to order and ask for our workgroup members to go to board docs, pull up the meeting minutes from September 15th if you haven't had a chance to look at those already and then after, give everyone a moment to do that if I can have someone make a motion to approve these minutes in a second.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. All in favor of approval of the September 15 minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, thank you so much. The minutes are approved. Next, I would like to approve today's agenda if I could have a motion in a second.
No favorable on the agenda?
No second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any extensions? All right, thank you. We'll move forward, I appreciate it. And so to any of our live viewers and those watching the recording, I want to remind everyone that we do keep everything on the board docs platform. You can find that on the PG CPS Board of Education website and in our marketing of the workgroup and in our workgroup website pgcs.org backslash climate. And you'll see what we always like to make sure everyone knows is available is our founding documents and resolution from the Board of Education. Having covered these items, I'm now going to turn over to Joseph Jakuta and Kate Colzoni who will take us through some of our administrative matters for the workgroup, but then we are going to move as quickly as possible to getting started with our content today. And at that point, we're going to welcome our many guests and presenters. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Strather. The first thing we wanted to remind everyone is that our next meeting is October the 20th at 3:30. We're starting on our technical discussions that are occurring a little bit more often. The topic of the conversation on October 20th will be building instruction, maintenance and operations. We'll be covering as much as we can on buildings on that conversation, though there may be a need for some topics to lead into the following meeting, which will also discuss electricity procurement. So that's October 20th at 3:30. The next thing I wanted to mention is that the research request is coming in and is not all available yet, but for workgroup members, there's now a shared document in the Google folder called data requests and it contains a few of the pieces that have come in, in particular facility data, some very good information that I believe workgroup member Donna Halton's been putting together. And the transportation department has been doing some amazing work to putting together transportation data which is available for us to look at. We have been told that more information should be coming, but and also of course that not everything could be fulfilled in time because we did have a large data request. Any questions on all that? Okay, and I will turn the mic over to Kate who will talk about our subworkgroups and our survey.
All right, so hi, everyone. We did have a link to sign up for subgroups. I think David, if you can throw up that slide on to show who has signed up for which group, that would help facilitate any additional signups that are needed. And then we can get to scheduling those subgroups. Now, remember, the purpose of those subgroups are to kind of dig into the recommendations a little bit more, review the content that was presented and then come up with recommendations to present back to the workgroup. So if you do not see your name on one of these, let us know in the chat and we can add it or you can email David and Pamela directly. Any comments or questions on the subgroup signups? We would like to get started on scheduling and holding those subgroups soon, including the legislative strategy subgroup. Okay. Then we also had, if you saw the engaged newsletter that came out yesterday, Pamela sent it out as well. The, we delegate Lehman, I see your chat and we'll make sure that you're on. Let us know which subgroups you want. I'm assuming legislative strategy is one of them. So we'll get them, get your name on there. And then, so it went out, please repost, share on your, in your social media outlets, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook and the like. Let, share widely because we would like to get as much input as possible. So it was sent yesterday and it's going to be open until October 30th. So we're going to use that information to feed into the subgroups and help with driving recommendations for the work in the final action. Any additional comments on either the subgroups or the survey that went out yesterday?
Yes, Pamela, I just wanted to note to our student representatives that I would welcome a kind of a breakout meeting with you to plan the student outreach to get as many survey responses as possible and I'll follow up with you on that because I think the data that comes back from the students would make a fantastic, the next virtual forum with students like we had in May to have a follow-up and we could use that data in that session to gather the school year student population feedback on the plan. So I'll follow up on that with you after the meeting.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready to get started on the main, the panel and the main content for the meeting. So Board Member Boozer-Strather, I'm going to send it back to you.
All right, thank you so much, Joseph and Kate. So I'm very excited about moving into this topic area. We have experts from PG CPS with us and advocacy experts and will be facilitated through some of this by Chloe Waterman, who of course is part of our workgroup, who is the Senior Program Manager for Friends of the Earth's Climate Friendly Food Program. And our special guests are the Director of Frontline, the Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Joan Shorter. We have Sarah Gillespie here, who's PG CPS Maintenance Technician for Recycling and the Composting Pilot Antoine Taylor, who's the PG CPS Building Services Operations Supervisor is with us. And then also, I'd like to welcome Dr. Coleman, who's the Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Sam Stephanelli, who's the Director of Building Services, and Sean Matlock, Director of Capital Improvement, who also will contribute to the conversation. There's questions that they can answer. So with that, I will hand this over to Chloe, who's going to set sort of the stage for this first segment around the food cycles and food waste. Thank you so much, Chloe.
Great, yes, thanks so much for allowing me to present. I'm excited for this conversation and to hear from our guests as well. Can you guys see my screen? Yes, okay, great. Let me make this in slideshow form. Okay, awesome. So as Board Member Boozer-Strather mentioned, I'm kind of here wearing two hats and one is that I'm the Senior Program Manager for Friends of the Earth's Climate Friendly Food Program. So I work at the intersection of diet, climate and public health and we have a particular focus with our campaign on school districts because the seven billion meals that are served each year in school districts have a huge potential to mitigate climate change, but also to improve the health of our students and especially to mitigate racial health disparities since students of color disproportionately rely on school meals as a primary source of nutrition. So we see school meals as such an important point of leverage for both our climate and public health goals. And that vision is shared by the Prince George's County Food Equity Council, which is going to, the other hat that I'm wearing, I'm the co-chair of the Prince George's County Food Equity Council. I put our mission on here so that folks can see what we do. I think the council does amazing work. It's been around for, before I moved to the county five years ago. And if folks are interested in food systems issues and how they relate to the county, I encourage folks to join. We have monthly meetings, we have subgroups that we work on as well. So encourage folks to, if you just want to write your email address in the chat or private chat me, if you're interested in joining these meetings, we'd be happy to have you. So I'm going to give a little bit of background on kind of what is the intersection between school food and climate change, the work of this subgroup. So at Friends of the Earth, we talk about healthy and climate-friendly school food. That means plant-forward, you know, featuring legumes, fruits, vegetables, nuts, seeds and whole grains. And it's low in meats, especially processed and red meats, low in sugar, low in saturated fat and sodium. We also talk about, but not fully plant-based, you know, we think that plant-based, you know, fully vegan options should be available, but we're really talking about plant-forward, you know, more plants on the menu. Ideally organic, which has important climate benefits as well as human health benefits and benefits for workers. And then of course, not wasted, can't throw it, if it's thrown in the trash can, then that is a waste of food, obviously. So a little bit of background, you know, I think when we think of climate change, you know, we go right away to oil and gas. And I think increasingly, there's been more public attention on the fact that food and agriculture is a major driver of climate change and by the same token, has potential to be a major solution to climate change. So about somewhere between a quarter to a third of global greenhouse gas emissions can be attributed to our food and agriculture system. And without curbing those emissions, we actually cannot meet the Paris Agreement targets, even if we're wildly successful when it comes to energy and some of the other high emission sectors. We have to tackle emissions from this sector. And emissions from our food system are largely driven by the livestock sector and by animal consumption. And that's because the food that ends up on our plate, right? We have to think about the whole life cycle of that food, starting from the land that may have been converted from, say, rainforest or grassland for cattle to feed on or to be, or to grow feed for chicken, for example. To think about all the emissions that are generated in the production of those animals and then the emissions throughout that animal's lifetime, those are called enteric fermentation. And so most of the emissions from our food system come from a relatively small number of foods and those tend to be animal products. So shifting to more plant-based foods, you get those climate benefits as well as the benefits to human health. And that's what this slide is about. So most of the major public health organizations, our own, you know, USDA dietary guidelines agree, we need more plants in our diet, less meat. More than three quarters of Americans are consuming as much or more than the amount of meat, poultry and eggs that is recommended by the dietary guidelines. But we're way under-consuming fruits and vegetables and other plant-based and plant-based sources of protein. And then of course, to go back to the food waste bit, I work a little bit less on food waste, I work more on kind of what is actually on the tray in the first place. But food waste is of course a huge issue. You've probably heard the statistics about, you know, half of food gets wasted. And then when you think about food waste, you have two levels of waste. You have the emissions that are associated with the production of that food and the emissions that are associated with the decay of that food in landfill. So those are two big sources of methane pollution. In schools, you know, estimates range, but we think school food probably accounts for 2% of food waste. And there's a number of things that schools can do to mitigate their food waste, you know, think back to the reduce, reuse, recycle, right? So those back-of-the-kitchen techniques, how they do menuing and ordering, using an offer versus serve model so that kids only have to take what they want to eat instead of taking every meal component, using share tables and then, you know, figure out composting and recycling that after stream. So looking at all of those, all of those parts of the supply chain. And I wanted to mention on this slide that there's legislation that a delegate from Montgomery County, Delegate Lorg Charcutian, is planning to introduce in the coming session that will create, would create a grants program for school districts in Maryland to implement initiatives to reduce their food waste. So if folks are interested in learning more about that, weighing in on that bill, you know, please let me know. And Delegate Charcutian is eager to, you know, work with PG CPS and with this workgroup on that initiative. Here's just a case study that can show the benefits of shifting what is served on the menu. So Oakland Unified School District reduced the animal products on its menu by 20% over a period of two years, focusing on chicken and cheese. And it generated a 14% reduction in its carbon footprint as well as $42,000 in cost savings. The way they did this is that they shifted to do more scratch cooking, another really important facilitator that allows school districts to use minimally-processed foods and foods directly from local independent farmers and ranchers to get them onto kids' plate. So Oakland switched to more scratch cooking, they switched to more plant-based foods that were less expensive, they invested more in paying for the labor to prepare those foods. And you know, the 14% reduction they achieved, that was, if they had achieved that by installing solar panels, it would have taken 87 solar panels at a cost of more than a million dollars. But instead, to be able to save money with this, with this strategy makes it really compelling. This is just one other example from a school district, Lee County in Florida, showing the difference, you know, just one recipe swap, switching from a beef tomato pasta to a beyond meat tomato pasta in this case, is showing, you know, over the course of a year, what that looks like over two years, sorry, in terms of, you know, saving 2.6 million miles driven, for example. One more example, this was a school district that did this even during COVID-19, which is really impressive because schools face a lot of barriers as it is. They face regulatory barriers, costs, financial, student acceptance barriers. But during COVID, that was, you know, loaded up to the millionth and I think we'll hear about that from some of our guests today. But this is just one example of a school district that found locally sourced lentils, they were able to support local farmers, they were organic lentils, turned it into a basil lentil burger that was really a hit during the pandemic with students and families. I also wanted to bring up another aspect of our school meal program, which is the sourcing and how that relates to the other values that we have as a county. So I've talked already about environmental sustainability, but our school meal program also obviously has important nutritional benefits, but it can also bolster local economies if we're procuring from Prince George's County and Maryland farmers. It can support workers' rights and worker issues by sourcing from supply chains that have good labor practices and allow for unions and support superior animal welfare practices as well. So there's a program called the Good Food Purchasing Program that's been adopted in DC, public schools, Baltimore Public Schools is working on it and several other dozens of other jurisdictions really across the country. So this just kind of sets an example, you know, we could, this is the type of thing that I think this workgroup could propose in the climate action plan is that PG CPS moves toward adoption of a program like this where we're leveraging our school food procurement dollars to support these values as well as our value around racial justice. That's not listed on this tribe, but is super important when we think about procuring from, you know, black and indigenous and people of color farmers. Just one other policy example from DC, DC passed a policy establishing a target to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions associated with its food purchasing, which includes DC public schools. And they're going to accomplish this by reducing food waste and shifting toward more plant-based foods on the menus. And so I think this is another type of policy proposal that we could consider for Prince George's County. And then I just wanted to, I know we're going to hear from PG CPS in a minute, but I feel like for many of us, if we, I know we have some students on this call that this menu probably looks familiar to them, we have some parents that I'm sure have seen the menus. But for some of us, I admit, I don't have a student in PG CPS. So sometimes it's just helpful to look at this and see what are, what are our kids actually eating? So I thought that I'd just paste this up here. So you can get a sense of kind of where we are now and I guess, and we'll hear more from Director Shorter and our other guests about this program. So at this point, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and come back to all of you and we're going to move into, you know, ask our other special guests to introduce themselves and provide a little bit of background on their roles and the programs that they work on at PG CPS. And then we have kind of a list of questions for them, but we also want all workgroup members to be able to ask questions. So as you have questions, please put them in the chat and I'll moderate the discussion with Joseph and Kate's help and hopefully get to folks' questions. You can ask questions of me at that time as well. So Director Shorter, can I ask you to kick it off with introductions?
Sure. Good afternoon, I'm Joan Shorter, Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Prince George's County Public Schools. We serve approximately pre-pandemic and at this rate, we're going over 80,000 lunches, close to 55,000 breakfasts a day and suppers, pre-pandemic, about 7,000 suppers each year. So our menus meet USDA requirements. We have to meet the standards for the five components that we do offer, which is the grain, the meat or meat alternate, a vegetable, a fruit and a milk, all within the guidelines of meeting the nutrient standard and the calorie restrictions for each age group. We do, we do offer versus serve, so the students do not have to take all the items, they can select what they want, they have choices. And so in your presentation, I saw, you know, there are many things about offer versus serve, so we are meeting those standards in regards to that. There are specific requirements that we have to meet in terms of beans and legumes and all of those that are being met within the nutrient standard and the requirements on the USDA. We don't have the flexibility of going to local farms. We do do local, we have a produce company that we say we want local produce. Again, when we're talking about breakfast, lunches and suppers and we're talking about breakfast in the classroom at 600, there isn't a local farmer in Prince George's County that can provide the products that we need and the quantities that we need to support our program. So local for us extends to Virginia, West Virginia, Delaware and as far as New Jersey for products because that is what we, we're resourcing most of our fruits and vegetables. The other items that come in from California, those things that are grown year-round. So one of the things that we have done in our schools, and we did this started years ago, is that there's always a fruit basket. So it says fruit on there. So while the menu not specifically state that there are fruits, but every school has a fruit basket that has seasonal fruits, we do watermelons, we do apples, we do oranges, we do pomegranates, we do all of those items, cantaloupes. So we do offer a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables. We do not use canned vegetables, everything is either frozen or fresh. We do not have the capacity to scratch cook in our kitchens. We do not handle raw products, we do not have that. That is a food safety issue and a food safety standards. While some schools are designed that way, our facilities are not. So most of our products are brought in frozen, our spaghetti sauce, our taco meats, all of those are brought in frozen because, and most of them are to our specification. So we have worked with manufacturers in terms of the products that we want and the items that we want to meet our specification and for our students. So our menu, we've never really had an issue. Again, we encourage students to take the fruits and vegetables. Again, they're encouraged to take only what they want. USDA regulations state that they must take a fruit or vegetable in order for that to be a reimbursable meal. So within that guideline, that's the only thing that they are required to take, they don't have to take anything else. We do special diets, we do kids with special needs, diet modifications, we chop pure a dice, we do everything. So as far as our menus and our guidelines, we are meeting the standards and exceeding the standards in most cases. Sodium limits, we've met our sodium limits several years ago. Fat content is low, sugar content is low, to the fact that some of it, and I'm being honest, students don't necessarily want our food because it doesn't taste like home. So in terms of nutrient content, school nutrition is probably the most nutrient-dense food and items that they're going to get outside of buying pizzas from Domino's or someplace else because we know what's in our product, we know that it has to meet specific standards and child nutrition labeling. So the option, I saw pictures, a lot of kids bring a lot of things from home. A la carte items that we do sell are also regulated by the state of Maryland. So there's only, we can't sell sugary drinks and juices, we cannot do all of that. So that has been since the past five, six years, we have been going down this road with the new requirements and the guidelines. It's there, it's offered to students, we can't force them to take anything. We do encourage them to do that, we participate in the fresh fruits and vegetable program. There's quite a few schools that receive fresh fruits and vegetables every week. So we're going, in a lot of cases, we go above and beyond to make sure that they have choices and what they need. Their vegetarian options, the issue of vegetarian options is that they don't select the vegetarian option. So while we put it on the menu, we have brought in hummus and we've brought in falafel, we've brought in so many vegetarian options that we ended up throwing out because the kids don't eat it, they don't want it. We have black bean burgers, we have soy burgers, we've done, we have tried everything, taste testing, all of those, and they just don't want it. And so we end up wasting all of that food and money going down the drain as well. So I mean, those are some of the challenges that we face. We're always looking for new products and always looking for new ideas and, you know, giving them various options. So that's, you know, what we do on a daily basis. We're struggling right now during this time period, meeting some of those demands, but we continue to offer a variety for our students. So we have various, and we have various issues. When you talk about the volume that we feed up in and out to California, we visit in school districts with the USDA, they have a growing season that's year-round. So what they can do in California, we can't do in Maryland. Some school districts are smaller, they don't have the capacity of 600, 700, 800 kids in a building that they need to put, produce that many breakfasts, that many lunches and, you know, suppers. So comparing one district to another is not always as easy as it seems because they're so different. You have to look at the size of the district, you have to look at the size of the school, how many students are enrolled, you also have to look at the participation for schools. So if we had a school that was 800 but only 100 kids eat, and then you would have more time to do those things if you do scratch cooking. Also, the food safety aspect of scratch cooking. With the limited time and the situation with the number of kids in our schools, that takes a lot of time to cook. So chicken takes a lot of time to bake. So we did hamburgers that, so we, that's why we do our pre-cooked items that we heat and serve because lunch has to be from 10 to 2. So that's just sort of a summary of what we do and how it falls into. And I know there's been some discussion about composting and having the kids separate and do all of those things. And that's fine, but again, encouraging students to only take what they need. And I've seen the waste as well. I've seen a lot of that waste because they take it because they have to, especially the fruit and vegetable, they have to take it. So that's why we put out the fruit bowl. So if you don't want it now, you can hold on to that piece of fruit and eat it later. But that's not always the case, so. That summarizes our program.
Well, thanks so much for that background. Mr. Taylor, could we go to you now for an introduction and a little bit of information about your role in all of this?
Afternoon, everyone. My name is Antoine Taylor. Previously spent 20 years in Anaron County Public Schools. I'd just begun here last August, glad to be a member of the Prince George's County Public School Team now. The Office of Operations actually provides daily cleaning and sanitizing over 20 million square feet of facilities. We work hand-in-hand with the local 400 facility use, supply orders, equipment repair. Facility use, supply orders, equipment repair are some of the things that we deal with on a daily basis. We have over 1,100 employees. So large group of folks that we have moving forward to ensure that the staff have safe and clean environments. We also produce and process all of the disciplinary actions for the Local 400 employees. That's about it.
All right. Great. Thank you. And then Ms. Gillespie, are you on the line as well?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, I'm Sarah Gillespie. And just to note quick, when I started in the system, my name was Sarah Campbell, and now it's changed to Sarah Gillespie. So if you see that, those are both me. But I'm Sarah Gillespie. I'm the recycling technician. I'm in plant operations with Mr. Taylor. And so I oversee our, the bulk of our recycling program. So our, basically our blue bins in schools and offices, our blue dumpsters that we have at all locations, all facilities. And so, you know, with those containers, we're collecting paper, cardboard, you know, all our recyclable food containers and items like that, and going to the Prince George's County MRF. So my program is really, you know, looking at daily operations of, you know, how that's working and we have been doing a little bit innovation here where we have, you know, working on ways to increase our data and get better data per school. And so that's something maybe later on I can touch on a little bit more. But that's something we're excited to share. Also, you know, as far as composting, I've been working with our team here. We've got a couple of our members, Ms. Ms. Smith from Largo High School and Donald Bell from Williams Schmidt Center. Our couple of the team members that we've been working together to get a pilot program up at Largo High School. And then also another team member from William Schmidt, we've been working on a similar pilot at Laurel Elementary for a composting program there. So that's been really great. And then also Food Nutrition, Joan Shorter, we've been, she's been a great teammate with that as well. So that's just a quick little recap there.
Great. Well, thanks to all of our guests for those introductions. At this time, we'll move into a Q and A. So if folks have questions, feel free to either use like the raise hand function on Zoom if you want to ask it orally or put a question in the chat. And I will, I will kick us off and fill in any blank spaces with some questions that we prepared in advance. So maybe I'll start with, with you. Sarah, can you just talk a little bit more about those pilot program, pilot composting programs in Largo? How is it going? And what would it take to expand those programs to other schools across the district?
Yeah, thank you for that. So I do want to say I invite Donald and Michelle to jump in as well, since they are both on the ground and been really role in this. But so we actually started talking about a pilot program for composting back in 2019. And so our division here worked on that. And we had actually put together a draft of a plan and then COVID hit and that really kind of shut down that for a while there. And so when the state bill came out, you know, talking about composting in the state and moving forward, you know, we already had a lot of that background, a lot of those connections, everything really set to go. So that was a great connection for us. And, you know, with the support and, you know, the interest in this from Dr. Wilson, Dr. Fossett, you know, previously Dr. Mr. Stanton and, you know, Mr. Stefanielli and Schmidt Center and Dr. Conyers, you know, it really was a big team effort and with Ms. Shorter and her crew there. So Largo High School has been doing great with their composting. So they actually started kind of a pre-pilot last spring, just when they had a few kids in the building and jumped right in and started sorting the materials with the students there. With the program, we're focusing on food. At that time, it was, you know, since we were pre-packaging everything, it was focusing on food. And so they created a PSA with the students and the students shared that with the, with their school community. And then from that and the lead teacher, you know, just really, they were all in. And so they worked with the kids to really get the message through of only food in the compost. And that was a really good success. And it really helped us try to plan for what the capacity is going to be moving forward. And then this school year with the compostable trays being a part of it, we were able to, you know, plan on that volume. And so right now, we've got, I think we have six toters over at the school and they're being picked up regularly. And, you know, with the volume of our trays, that is, with the volume of the trays and then the weight of the materials, you know, is something that kind of is a big factor on the cost for the program, as well as things like the supplies, the, the bags, you know, the hauling costs as well. So if this, you know, for this program to kind of scale up and to increase throughout the district, the costs for those supplies are something that's really going to have to be, you know, factored in because it will be, you know, it, it's an additional cost for the hauling and for everything there. I also would like to mention really quick, the Laurel Elementary, where we're composting there with that pilot, that is in with partnership with the city of Laurel. And so they have been a great supporter and our Schmidt Center, John Levin has been wonderful there. And so the city of Laurel is supporting us with that tool by providing the bins, providing supplies and providing the hauling. And so that has been a tremendous partnership because now, you know, that, that takes that, you know, that kind of takes us off our plate, right? And so we're really excited about that. And also, you know, we'd like to maybe see that model as something, you know, to talk with other municipalities, with the county further, at the way to kind of build partnerships.
Great. And then I know we have Michelle and Donald on as well. Did you guys have, want to add anything onto that?
Um, the biggest thing is for us that kind of worked. I am the assistant principal over our science department and our Merlin Green School, and that's been consistent for the last six years. And our green school coordinator, Mr. Johnson, who actually got the composting program started with Sarah's helping Donald. So we had to actually create our master schedule around him so he could be available for all our lunches. Because it's not just, it's not just the cost of the bags, it's also the manpower needed. Because in order to compost, we had to, of course, create the PSA and get it out. We are a really tech-based school. So the PSA was created with myself and the green school kids. We use Google, we got used Google Classroom to get it to every student in our distribution list. So they understood why we were doing it. The big thing when we did during hybrid, because that was our pilot, we had about 150 kids here that helped, mostly ninth and 10th, because we are a small school. But then getting more kids to join, because most of our green school was 12 graders who graduated. Then when we came back, they were mostly the new 12 graders who honestly were, they didn't want to touch the food scraps. So we had to kind of like get a new group of green school kids to join us to do the composting part, separating the food scraps. One thing was difficult. It's like the waste, kids wasting food, having to separate plastics and so forth. So that's another thing to keep in mind. We now have up to almost 17 kids now, mostly ninth graders. So we had to do student service learning hours for them, figure out a way how to do this after school. So those are things that as a school, we had to keep in mind, especially at the high school level. Because kids don't really want to touch that kind of stuff during lunch, because they have to go to more classes. And thinking about, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
And thinking about things like scheduling of who's going to lead this, because administratively, yes, I'm over it, but I'm also doing lunch. So we had to do everything around our green school coordinator, who also runs the composting program. And working with our maintenance crew here, because we didn't want to put that burden on them. So it's really just him and I in regards to moving the totes and everything. I'm an assistant principal moving composting totes.
Great.
So.
All right. Well, thanks for adding that, that color onto it, Michelle. I, I hear those challenges. And Delegate Lehman has her hand up. Do you have a question, Delegate Lehman, or comment?
I do. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I was curious, and if I missed this, I do apologize. I heard a general reference to food waste. I think there's been a figure out for many years that as much as 50%, for at least 40 to 50% of all solid waste is food waste. But those studies are typically focused on municipal solid waste. I think the figures have been around for quite a while and they may even be higher. But do you have a figure for PGCPS specifically on what's being, how much is being thrown away and what's being thrown away? That's question number one. And then I'll tell you, I'll go ahead and give you question number two, which is, I'm curious about the process for Food and Nutrition Services to be able to introduce new products. And I mean, brand new products, like say a lentil burger or something that has never been on the menu at all, not just like changing, changing brands. Is that a, can that be done quickly or not? And is that, is that going to be looked at? Because I would imagine for a system so big, there's, you know, longstanding contracts. So I'm just curious about what that might look like if they would want to try something brand new like a lentil burger. That's it. Thank you.
So I can respond to the process for product selection is we do product testing with students. So we always have a student panel in multiple schools across the county and we go through the whole process. And so it's blind testing. They give us a survey. We complete the survey. They let us know if they like the product, they don't like the product. What they like in terms of what they like about it, what needs to be improved. So we can always go back to the manufacturer that if we have a product that's favorable, then we will put it on the menu. And so when we go out to bid, we can do a one-time purchase, which is called, so we can purchase that product because outside of the bid, with authorization for purchasing for one-time product to purchase that. And when we roll our bid cycle over, then we can add that to the menu. So we do have, we have a procedure for all items that are placed on the menu have gone through product testing. Include the milk, the chocolate milk, the strawberry, everything has gone through product testing with us, with students. So and when we keep those documents as well, because we need to keep them for any, if there's any discrepancy or any vendors or any manufacturer that would want to question why we selected a product versus another product, we can demonstrate to them that we have gone through that process with the students, how many students were tested, what the score is, how they rank in that process and why we select those items on the menu.
Thank you. And then what about the waste issue?
We, I have not done, we have not done a waste study, but I can tell the waste, I, I see waste when I go into schools in terms of the fact that we tell them to take the food or vegetable. So if a child comes and they only want a hamburger and a milk, that is a reimbursable meal. However, they must take a fruit or vegetable. They might not want the food or vegetable and that might go in the trash.
Right. So that could be one recommendation, in fact, that comes out of this Climate Change Action Plan Working Group, which would be to fund a waste audit for PGCPS. So we at least know what is the amount of waste and develop a strategy to tackle it. You know, I actually, I have a question because we're fortunate to have some student members on and I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, in, in the presentation, we talked about how one of the most important things that you can do for school food to reduce the climate impact is to actually shift what you're serving and sort of more plant-based foods, those options that Director Shorter listed, like falafels and veggie burgers and hummus and things like that. And Director Shorter mentioned that they'd had problems with student acceptance of those items and getting students to say, to take them. I'm curious from our student members, do you guys have any, any thoughts about that? What would, what would be your suggestions? Do you think we need some more student outreach and education or marketing around kind of the importance of taking plant-based options? How do you feel like you and your, you and your peers feel about, you know, adding options that might be more climate friendly to the menu?
You know, like, no offense, but I, I do bring my own lunch to, to school because I prefer, I prefer cooking my own food and like eating vegetables, lots of plants and stuff like that with my, you know, protein, right? But as far as school meals go, I would definitely say there needs to be more education and definitely marketing would help. Because if people understand that it's not just, not just the fruit, you know, it's, it's good for you, that would go a long way.
Great. Any other thoughts?
I eat, yeah, I eat school lunch, but I'm open to healthier options. But for me and a lot of people that I know, it's more so of the look, like, whether it actually looks appetizing or like something that they would eat, a lot of them complain about it not looking, you know, good. And that's one of the reasons why they don't, they don't choose to eat it. Like it might taste good, but it doesn't look good, if that makes sense.
It does. Great. All right. I see we have a hand from Sean. Go ahead, Sean. Oh, sorry, Jabari, did you want to comment on that as well?
Um, yeah, I'm going to add one to the, uh, yeah, I thought they should give like more promotion towards that. They should make the food look more appealing to students. So they can get, it could push them to eat that, those healthier options. And they should offer like a menu to where it's like a wider selection. So they won't have to be restricted leave to one type of healthier option that they can choose to eat.
Great.
So can I jump in, in regards to that? The menus posted on Meal Viewer. And so especially at the high school level, there are multiple choices. There's always a salad plate. There's hot vegetables, there's cold vegetables, and there's usually, pre-pandemic, at least three different options for the day. In terms of, and, and that's surveyed based on, the menus are developed for high school based on the surveys from high school students. So there's always like a chicken dish or there's always something, chicken is on every day. And there's some form of a pizza, which is a whole grain press and low sodium and all of that and low fat cheese. So the menu is posted. It's just a matter of, and usually at the schools, they'll post that as well. When you're going through the serving line, just take a look at that and see what those options are, which you would like.
All right. Over to you now, Sean.
I was just wondering, in regards to composting, do, what are the, what are the land use needs for that? I mean, how much space do you need? Are there any requirements on distance from building or anything like that that we should consider when thinking about a site and how we might want to create an area for composting?
Okay. Yeah, I can jump in on that. So with Largo High School and with Laurel Elementary and in general, you know, with the food waste and we're talking about off-site composting. So it's going to a big industrial facility. So our facility goes over to the, the county facility off of 301. So that gives us, you know, a bit of an advantage that we don't have to do that. However, some schools have done onsite composting. And that's usually been things like, you know, if they have a school garden and they're doing yard waste or things, having that occasionally a little bit of food scraps, if it's like man appeals. But we don't really encourage the full-scale food-based composting onsite, just because of all those other issues like you mentioned. But yeah, so the, for our pilots, they're going to the facility. So it's being transported there.
Marita, am I saying your name right?
Yeah, you are Chloe. Hi, thanks. Yeah. So my question is a follow-up. I think this is what Sean just asked, because I also had the question about where the food waste is composted and whether it gets returned to the schools for reuse on site at school gardens or planting beds. And, and what percentage of the schools are currently using recycled compost? Do you have any idea?
Yeah. So our composting program is very new, but we have talked with the hauler about returning finished compost to the school to put, you know, make that full circle and, and close the loop there. And then also of course, you know, integrate it into lessons with the kids so they can really see, you know, what they've done, use it on school grounds. I don't have any information about current amount of compost that's used on our schools. That'd have to be something we checked and get back to you.
And then Donald, you're next in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, the, the, in terms of the composting pilots that are going on right now, the only thing that I, I would add on to what the only thing that I, I would add on to what Sarah and Michelle mentioned is in terms of the processing of the materials when composting, the possibility of including more compostable containers, right? So I know the, the tray is, and that helps a lot because they stack the trays at Largo High School. So now, instead of, you know, the general waste stream, all of those trays are going to the composting facility. Is there a possibility of increasing like the, the fruit cup or other items? Because right now, they have to sort those items, and that takes a little bit more time in terms of processing the compost.
Yeah, so I'll jump in first and then throw it to Joan. Thank you for that. So, um, yes, the volume for the trays currently, you know, at schools, just the, the volume of trays that fills up the dumpsters is part of the reason why the waste collection is happening every day. And so just like with, you know, Largo, where we're able to divert that to the compost, the volume of those trays is very significant. With our plan, we had, you know, we were looking into changing over containers in order to, you know, make the switches from some plastic containers to compostables. And just like Donald mentioned, so that students, it would simplify the process. Instead of potatoes having to be emptied, you empty out the food. If you have the compostable container, the entire remnants of the food, everything goes right in the bin, and it really simplifies the program and, you know, also reduces contamination and rejection. So we have been working with Food Services on that, and I don't know if Joan has an update on our compostable containers.
At this point, I don't have any updates. There is a paper, there's a supply chain paper, so I don't even know when we're going to be getting any. We're struggling right now, just trying to keep up with what we have. So we're working with our paper company to get us what we need. So that's, that's been a challenge right now, is getting the material. They're having issues getting the material that they need. So we're still, we're, we're working, working at it.
Yeah, I just want to give, give the background that, you know, folks probably know this, but nationwide, you know, schools are facing real supply chain disruptions and issues. There are some school districts that have even stopped their school meal program right now because of the nature of the supply disruptions we're seeing. But we did also get an announcement from USDA that they'll be putting in $1.5 billion into some aid to schools that won't be seen for a little while, at least for another month or so. But hopefully that can help with some of these supply chain disruptions. I know it's, it's caused PGCPS to have to, you know, temporarily suspend supper meals program. And so, you know, please let us know, Director Shorter, you know, as, as community members and, you know, county and state government, how, how we can support you all during, during that time.
We're actually, we offer suppers to those, those students that are, we have about 80, 85 schools with before and after care programs, so that we have continued supper program. We just have to limit, we couldn't do a blanket supper for every, for all schools, all 204 sites. So that's, that's the challenge right now. Yes, USDA has, maybe they will 1.5, but, but the challenge is that what we're hearing from our manufacturers, even in terms of paper, is that they don't have the supply. For example, there's a situation where they don't have the corn that they need to make paper. And so not having those supplies is just a...
And so this, this actually leads into, I have one final question for, for you, Director Shorter. And I see Joseph has his hand up, and then I think we're going to have to move to our second, our, the next agenda item here. But, you know, dreaming big, you know, you, you shared about a lot of the challenges that you face, you know, not, not having a scratch cooking ability, not having a central kitchen, you know, student acceptance challenges, challenges with aggregation to be able to get from local farmers, given, you know, the high demand that you have. But we do also see, you know, these examples from districts of all sizes and shapes, you know, with different that have, you know, made some of these, these, these changes. What would it take for that kind of change in Prince George's County public schools to, you know, shift to a scratch cooking model that was, you know, able to utilize more local, you know, fresh fruits and vegetables that, that had that marketing and education? Are we talking, you know, what's your dream policy? You know, if we doubled your reimbursement rate, if we created a central kitchen in Prince George's County, to, you know, to support, if there were training programs for your staff? Like dreaming big, you know, what, what could we do from a policy perspective to make your job easier? To kind of take PGCPS, Food and Nutrition Services, and take the menus to that next level? You know, even healthier foods, more, more local sourcing, sourcing from BIPOC producers, you know, healthy and climate-friendly options?
Um, so if we had a central commissary, we still have the issue of having to prepare and package and freeze to be delivered to schools. So we don't, again, if we're talking about scratch cooking, bringing raw products to a central facility or commissary, again, so it's cooking it, it's, it's flash freezing, and then having a delivery system to get it out to the schools. For example, our spaghetti sauce right now, that is our recipe that we developed years ago that a company makes our spaghetti sauce, and that's delivered to us. So when we look at products and we're looking at, we're helping manufacturers develop products that meets the standard. So yes, given that, if we had a commissary, we had those facilities, that would happen. But we also utilize our local because a lot of our produce, our kale, comes from Miller's Farm. So we do have, we just, we have local farmers that produce our produce company. And that's what I was saying, our produce company, when we talk about local, if we wanted blueberries, then we know that New Jersey's got blueberries, then the produce company will reach out to, because those buyers have, those farmers have those consortiums where they bring all their products, and that's how we get it. So if we have Farm to School Week and we want to serve corn, they know in advance, how much corn do we need? So she, they start procuring those corn and having it in hand. So it's, it's, it goes hand in hand, it's working with the farmers. But not, again, if we were a smaller school district and we had a farm that was, I think about it from Alver, we had a cliot farm right there. Those farms have gone away. So we're looking at, you know, peaches, if we're talking about peaches from Maryland, it's coming from the eastern shore, and they're making sure that there's enough. They've already contacted those farmers and said, hey, I need this much. But is it something, it's probably a one-time or two, two-day event because we can't get those products. So we're working, I mean, we're, we're trying to do as much as we can to get as many...
And no, and no, the, the, really, the intention of the question is not about what you're doing currently at all. It's about what's your dream to be able to do, you know?
Well, my dream would be to be able to do that. But again, based on the quantities that we're, I mean, and I, and I get that because it's like, okay, you need to serve more and you need to serve more. But I think sometimes, you know, I have to be really candid. When we look at the magnitude, if we're talking about 55,000 breakfasts and 80,000 lunches, just think in terms of how many apples that is, that we're talking about, just for one day, for one school. So, and not being close to, we don't have a growing season year-round. So for me, if we had, you know, we try to get frozen products in, or frozen fruits or those kinds of things. So yes, if I had that dream, it would be a huge warehouse and a central facility with a kitchen where we could do that. But also understanding that there are products that are meant, that we would prepare in those kitchens that would end up going to the school, that would be frozen, that have to be re-thermed at the school as well, just based on the number of students that we're feeding, so.
Absolutely. Great, thank you for that. Joseph, over to you.
Thank you for all, all that insightful conversation. I am going to turn it a little bit. So I, several years ago, I got lucky to be able to work with the Thomas Stone Elementary's Environmental Group, the globe, the Green Ambassadors. And we were talking, I learned a little bit about how recycling worked and how they were learning all about that in school. And I'm just curious, sort of, A, I guess, what sort of the breakdown between, in the recycling program, between it being reliant on volunteers at the student and teacher level versus staff taking care of it? And then also, Ms. Gillespie had mentioned data, and I was very curious about that as well.
Yeah, so thank you. So our, at every school, we have essentially a basic team that we try to set up, which is our principal, a recycling coordinator from the instructional staff, and sometimes that's a classroom teacher, it might be a guidance. You know, various people fill that role, and then the building supervisor. And that's kind of the core team that, you know, that I work with in addition to partners like the Schmidt Center and other, you know, environmental groups that have helped us with this. And so, you know, usually I'm communicating a lot with the building supervisor, with the recycling coordinator, and through those partners at the school, you know, putting in place some of the, you know, behaviors and some of the program, you know, everything about how it runs. And so, you know, with your question about volunteers, some of those schools do have, you know, seem to have, you know, other volunteers that are coming in. But, you know, things have really kind of shifted, right? Especially with the COVID, and so we're kind of in a period where we're, you know, making that shift. And so having, you know, as we're coming back with like the, the building supervisor and the recycling coordinator and, you know, focusing with them, but it's, it's intended to be, you know, staff and student participation as well when possible. But, you know, the general thing is, right, everybody's responsible for sorting their own waste correctly, right? And so with the lessons and activities, you know, at the school and with our website and newsletter and other communications, you know, we're trying to get the right items in the bin and then having the items, you know, go correctly to the right dumpster. And then also, real quick about the data. Traditionally, you know, when I first started, we were getting data as an aggregate of every route. So you would have multiple sites, you know, whatever the truck route was, you would get all of that collected, all that data would be, you know, when they went and dumped it at the recycling facility, get a weight. So you could really only tell, you know, 20, 30, 40 schools altogether, you know, together, this is how much we were doing. But what we've done is we've been using sensors in the dumpsters, and the sensors help us monitor the fill level of each dumpster. And so now, we're going to be able to have weight per school. And so we're going to be able to have, you know, that data at the school level, which is something that, you know, we've heard a lot from schools saying, well, how much does my school do? You know, and we weren't able to provide that in the past. And so we have that with all the recycling dumpsters, and then we're piloting that with the trash dumpsters too, so that we can start to really get data that is school-specific and share that data with schools. And then, you know, kind of open up that, you know, black box that sometimes has been that dumpster. You know, we don't know what, how much exactly was going in there, it was very difficult. And so having that data that is homing in more, and so the goal is to, you know, basically start sharing that out with schools once that's available. And so that schools can start to see that, right? And it encourages, you know, them to be more active and also just, you know, also use it in the classroom, right? So we're hoping that it's going to be something that teachers can incorporate into lessons and be, you know, kind of a feedback there as well.
Great, thank you. Well, at this point, I just want to thank the PGCPS folks on the, on the panel for being here today and really for all of the work that you do. You have some incredibly hard jobs, and it sounds like you're doing some, some great work under tough, tough conditions, especially with the pandemic. So just want to tip my hat to you and turn it back over to Board Member Boozer Struther.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chloe, for this great questions and moderation. And to our panelists, I took a ton of notes, and I know I could see the depth of the subgroup of the, the follow-up questions and the data collection and, and how to move forward. And, you know, I learned a lot today as well, and I really appreciate it. And I thought I would, I want to move to other materials and waste cycles and introduce, you know, Ms. Gillespie staying with us in this conversation. And I'd like to introduce for our, we picked one non-daily waste cycle. We certainly have waste cycles, in particular recycling. I would, I would guess that Mr. Matlock could probably tell us how they recycle metal and other materials from deconstructing buildings or maintenance projects. But what we picked was the one that certainly getting a lot of attention in climate action, which is, is the synthetic sports fields. So to speak to that, we're going to have Delegate Mary Lehman, who's a member of our work group. And I'd like to welcome Diana Conway, who's the President of Self-Safe Healthy Playing Fields, Inc. And did I see, and Kathleen Michaels is also with us, PhD, who's an advocate of the Self-Hate Healthy Playing Fields, Inc. from Montgomery County. And I just want, before we move into the topic of the sports fields, I just wanted to give, ask Ms. Gillespie one more question around the waste out of our, out of our food service is the, the milk cartons. I know that, you know, I went from elementary, you know, from school, public school to college, and milk, milk was in the vet, the vending machines. And, you know, they, they were kept cold, and you did single-serve, and you did not necessarily, you know, reusable, you use a, use a reusable cup, but you didn't have a carton that was thrown away, partially filled, totally full or empty. Can you talk at least about that, one more piece from, from our food services recycling and waste before we, in any other items you wanted to add before we move into the synthetic turf?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so we, you know, one of the ways I kind of encourage schools, like, you know, when they're restarting their program or anything, you know, is talking about like their drink container, right? Because everybody gets a drink, you know, everybody's got something. And for us, the vast majority of the drink containers we see in the schools are recyclable. So our plastic milk bottle, water bottles, soda bottles, or that, the cartons, the juice cartons, they are recyclable here in the county. So we're very fortunate that our juice container, also the juice boxes that have that kind of silver lining inside, or at your home, the soup cartons also. Those, all the gable top, those can be recycled as long as they're empty. One thing that we have, has been a big challenge, is straws. And so with the passage of the county straw ban, that, you know, has been great to, you know, something that can help us with that because the straws were contaminating the recycling. And so, but yeah, those, those cartons are recyclable. But one thing, you know, we, we use a lot of the plastic cellophane, plastic wrap, plastic bags, and that continues to be something, as well as like chip bags, that, you know, we're always putting out that message of, you know, don't put it in the blue bin, right? That's, that's trash, or you can return the grocery bags, the plastic wrap, go back to a retailer for recycling there. So those were, yeah, just a few I wanted to kind of highlight there that are always important messaging.
Yeah, thanks. And I just want to, you know, thank you again for all your, all your work on this. And the, I certainly, as a parent of an elementary student, have experienced how this, what our children are learning. They were, they were, they were probably instrumental in the advocacy on the straw ban. So, and I, I credit our teachers who volunteer as green team leaders for highlighting straws. So that was, that was great work. And I hope our, we can certainly engage our students in advocacy in Annapolis. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna see more of students doing climate action, what, from what they can change in the school building and then take home, such as composting and moving this county possibly to more composting regional sites so we don't have to, you know, put all this compost on diesel trucks and, and, you know, and, and contribute to carbon emissions by how we transport the compost. Or even, I think what Mr. Matlock was asking is what, what might it take to even have these in future, on future building sites as we move to net-zero energy and climate, climate-friendly school buildings? So, thank you so much. So with that, I'd like to move our presentation to synthetic turf to get a quick overview of why this is important, why we're looking at it today, and how, you know, what we can expect in the future. And I know that, I don't know if Kathleen or Di, Diane, if you have a presentation to pull up, or?
I, I'm Diana Conway. Can, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So I, I'm going to go first and I think Dr. Michaels is going to go second. And then our, one of our favorite delegates from Montgomery County, but she's still a favorite delegate. Delegate Mary Lehman is gonna really take it away for you. So I'm Diana Conway. I live in Montgomery County. I'm a public school parent of three athletes who've all, who are all out of college now. But I've been there, done that. And I'm here to really tell you about the, the story of synthetic turf and why there are five issues that, that you as a work group should care about. First of all, let me thank you for this work group, for the work all of you are putting in, having listened to the previous section. We are organic gardeners, we're beekeepers. I just went out and grazed on my fig tree outside. I mean, we're, we're all there with all of you. We compost the whole thing. So it's terrific to see this going on at the institutional level of a school board of a large county that can really provide leadership. So thank you to all of you and thank you for letting us come and join you and talk a little bit about this issue. This is one of those issues that's under the radar. I like to compare synthetic turf to a bad relationship. I think everybody's had one of those. So it's too hot, it's toxic, it's expensive, it has a high injury rate and you can't get rid of it. So with apologies for my effort at humor there, I'd like to just go through the, the, those five topics. The first is heat. All humor aside, synthetic turf is literally killing people. We've had seven high school athletes collapse and die from what's called exertional heat stroke, EHS. And you may remember three years ago, Jordan McNair, freshman at University of Maryland, collapsed on, in May, May of 2018, not that hot, right? Collapsed on a synthetic turf field and died two weeks later. There's state legislation that was passed in his name in order to require schools to be more aware of heat. But honestly, with climate change and with the heat issues presented by synthetic turf field, all the awareness in the world, unless you shut down the field for an increasing number of days, is not going to save students who are being pushed by their coaches, whether it's with pads and helmets or without pads and helmets. Those kids are going to get too hot on those fields. So that's the heat piece. The second piece is a big one for this group, I hope, the toxicity. So synthetic turf is a non-renewable petroleum product. The synthetic turf industry, after decades of denying it on the record nationally and internationally, has now conceded on the record unhappily on video, there is no recycling for synthetic turf in the entire United States. There never has been. So at the end of every synthetic turf field's life, which is anywhere from seven to 10 years, 12 if you use it beyond its warranty and safety levels, 250 tons of toxic mixed plastic waste comes out unrecyclable, unrenewable and has to go somewhere. In Montgomery County and Prince George's County, the, the landfills won't take them because of the volume and the weight of those fields. So where are they going to go? You're either paying extra to haul them, that's a lot of weight and volume, to a demo and rubble site of which there are only four left opening in Montgomery County, in Maryland, excuse me. So you're hauling it somewhere else at cost or you're dumping it illegally as Montgomery County Public Schools did. Three years ago, they took the Richard Montgomery High School field out and dumped it on the side of Bird River in a low-income community in Baltimore County. And that is legal because the quote recipient slash buyer is a, a paintball place that says they're going to use it eventually. Well, in the meantime, that's 250 tons of toxic waste sitting on the side of a river that the state spent almost $8 million cleaning about six years ago. And it's now dumping heavy metals and PFOS and lead and carcinogens into that water with no regulation and no violation of state law. That's just part of the toxicity. There's a newer piece of evidence that's just come out and had a congressional hearing, the title of which was, are chemicals from tires and playgrounds killing endangered coho salmon? There's a chemical in tires of which there are 40,000 on a synthetic turf field. Forty thousand tires, hotspot concentrated, 40,000 tires. That chemical is called 6PPD. It is resulting in a 99% mortality rate in endangered coho salmon up and down the West Coast, where your federal government has spent tens of millions of dollars over decades with the tribes and the states trying to restore this heritage fish and have failed. And they finally figure out why and it's because of the chemicals coming off of tires. We're not going to stop driving tomorrow, but we can stop installing these fields as hotspots that are literally killing fish and aquatic life around them. It is highly unlikely that the coho salmon is the only species that is vulnerable to 6PPD. So that's a chemical that has just had its public hearing in Congress and is the United States Tire Manufacturer Association General Counsel did not have a good time at that hearing. My heart was lifted by it, however. That's just part of the toxicity. The third piece, in addition to heat and toxicity, is injury. And the injury rate among synthetic turf field users is dramatically higher according to peer-reviewed published scientific studies in scientific journals. That's, the Ravens Orthopedic Surgeon has testified with us two years in a row saying the ankle and foot injury rate is almost twice as high. On the finest synthetic turf money can buy, never mind what the county's going to be able to afford, twice as high ACL, ankle, foot, metatarsal turf toe, it's called, as it is on grass. Now again, those are the nicest turf, grass fields money can buy, but the difference carries down the chain. It carries down to the NCAA, which is a college. And again, many of those schools are elite and have a budget, not like yours. But the injury rate is higher. In addition to the torque and the ACL that comes from twisting where grass will give and give you a divot, the synthetic turf grabs the cleat and that's what creates the problem. So in addition to that kind of twisting and torque injury, there's a second level, which is concussion and, and joint impact. And you can look online and find everybody from the National Women's Soccer League and Abby Wambach to J.C. Tretter, who is the president of the NFL Players Association complaining bitterly and saying, quote, this is a quote, "This game is dangerous enough." And then saying that the owners of this, of the NFL should take them back to grass for the safety of the players. Synthetic turf is considered a, an inferior dangerous product by the people who gets the best synthetic turf the world can buy. In addition to the torque ACL type injuries and the concussion injuries, there's also turf burn. If you know an athlete who's played on that stuff, when you do a slide tackle on, on plastic like that, it, it literally shaves your limb. And in Montgomery County, we've had students come to the school board and say that they wanted to thank the school board for the new field at Whitman High School, pretty fancy high school. But instead they have, they had to come and say that they were getting, these are, these are their words, gashes, wounds and lacerations from these fields. They look nice and it looks like the school is committing to its athletes and spending money on, you know, enriching the athlete experience. First of all, how many of the students are playing on that out of the entire school population? And it's, you know, 1.4 million to put in. And of the students who are playing on it, if they're getting wounds, gashes and lacerations, is that a good idea? Is that a good use of that kind of money when you've got recycling programs that are going, you know, begging? Or, or other programs in the school systems, we all know their schools are under stress. So it's injuries, it's heat, it's toxicity. The fourth item is cost. And of course, these all overlap. But synthetic turf costs between 800,000 for the cheap ones and 1.4 million to 1.6 million for the really fancy, nice ones to put in new. That requires taking out three to four feet of soil, putting in gravel and fine gravel and all the stuff that's required by warranty. And that kills two acres of soil underneath it. There's no worm life, there's no bees coming back to this place. You've got two acres of dead soil that you've just taken out of the carbon sink category and put into hotspot category. Because these fields, as I said, get to 180 to 220 in Australia degrees. And it is literally killing people. So it's 800 to 1.4, 1.6 million for the new one. The maintenance until four or five years ago, the synthetic turf industry was literally lying to people, saying that it was maintenance free as part of their reasons why this was a better deal than grass. And they have now stopped doing that. And they have, in fact, investigative reporters on various TV stations around the US, one of whom said something like, "It's a million dollar product. People think you put it in and you don't have to worry about it. It's a million dollar product. You better worry about it every day." And he talks about the heat. He also talks about the fact that MRSA, which is this antibiotic resistant infection that you can get when you rip open your skin, MRSA loves synthetic turf. And the older the turf gets and the higher use an area is, the better the MRSA survives. So all the areas where you get over and over slide tackles, like the goalie and the, the creases and the sidelines where all the kids sit, you know, waiting or their siblings sit waiting for their turn to go in, those are the highest MRSA areas available. So it is not maintenance free. It has to, the, the field has to be groomed, it has to be disinfected for MRSA. If you don't groom it, the infill gets pushed around by athletes who are, you know, pushing off of the field surface as they run and jump and fall. And if it doesn't get redistributed, you get uneven footing, which gives people many more muscle tears as well as these ACL tears I talked about. It also means you get a harder landing space. So if you're falling and you're getting a concussion, it's because the guy who came across there or the woman who came across there before you pushed all the infill out when they were trying to dash for something. So unless you spend a lot of time and money grooming it, you are going to have an unsafe surface. Furthermore, the industry itself and its training slides for managers of the fields they're trying to sell to these managers explain that the managers should expect a loss rate on that infill of the tires in most cases of one to five tons per field per year. One to five tons per field per year. That means if it's going out, you better replace it or you're presenting an unsafe field. And classically, these fields look great from the outside. They're bright green plastic. So anybody who's not actually on the field thinks it looks great. Grass tells you when it's in distress or when it's failing. It looks brown and you can see the divots. This stuff is designed to not show you anything except, "Look at me, aren't you glad you spent this money?" So if that one to five tons is not replaced, you have an unsafe field. If it is replaced, that means you're spending extra money on infill. And again, maintenance free, no cost, you know, that puts the lie to that as well. The fifth piece after heat, toxicity, injury and cost is disposal. And again, this wraps into toxicity and cost. There is no recycling for these fields. The industry has agreed there is no recycling for these fields. That's 250 tons of mixed toxic plastic waste with nowhere to go. So the options are incineration. The Montgomery County incinerator, for example, Dickerson, won't take it just because it takes so much processing to chop up all those pieces of carpet and it's not worth it for them. They've got plenty of other stuff coming in. If you're not going to incinerate it, you can landfill it. Well, as I mentioned, the Prince George's Montgomery County landfills won't take it. We haven't had a chance. We're an all-volunteer organization. We haven't had a chance to ask everybody, you know, would you take it? Would you take it? But the further away you have to go, the more you're paying for trucking. So that's another cost. But again, it's an unrenewable petroleum product. So even if you can find a place to take it and even if you're being responsible and paying to take it, that's great. Where's the money coming from? And it's just going to sit there and create microplastic. It's going to leach out the known carcinogens, the PFOS that you heard about earlier, the endocrine disruptors. And this stuff is going into the air, it's going into the soil, it's going into the water. And when it's on the field, of course, it's going into our kids. As, as the kids run on the surface, it aerosolizes everything on the field. And they're running and breathing deeply. They're rolling in it day after day, hour after hour, sometimes from pre-K through college. None of these chemicals have been tested in combination. Literally half of the chemicals, according to a nonprofit at Yale of toxicologists, half of the chemicals have never even been tested at all. The other half have been tested individually and they come up with carcinogens, they come up with endocrine disruptors. So those have been tested individually. You're combining them in high heat, day after day, with close, frequent, intended contact at inhalation, ingestion and dermal uptake at taxpayer expense. So those are my big five, the heat, the toxicity, the injury, the cost and the disposal. Coming after me next is going to be Dr. Kathy Michaels, who is a bona fide scientist. I'm a civic activist and unpaid president of this organization. But Kathy can really speak to you and answer questions specifically about toxicity. I'd be thrilled to come back and talk to you further. And then we're going to hand it over to Delegate Lehman, who's going to wrap it up. So the answer is grass. Grass works in all but the most extreme circumstances. It's cheaper, safer, softer and cooler. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you today.
Yeah, thank you, Diana. I'm just going to jump in for a second on the time check. So it's five o'clock, which is our typical ending time. But I would like to invite everyone to stay with us if it fits your schedule to continue to hear from Kathleen and from Delegate Lehman on this topic. And I did want to, to note that I do want to give a special thank you to Mr. Matlock for being here today because he is, he is the one who plans our school facilities and future facilities. And I saw him shaking his head on the injuries on the turf and understand some of these issues. And it's something I really care about. So I know folks will start to leave as you need to. But in case we don't have sort of like a final wrap up, I just want to say, you know, thank you to everyone who made the time, all of our presenters, if you have to depart at five o'clock. We really appreciate it. And then we'll, we'll have the recording you could come back to for the remainder of our conversation.
Hi, so I'm Kathy Michaels. So given the time, I wasn't sure, I don't know if David was able to get, I sent, since I'm multitasking here, I sent him a shortened presentation, shortened version of a presentation I gave. So Diana, Diana just gave a tour of course, description of, of the problems. And sometimes it's useful to have visuals. So I tried to condense the presentation I usually give and I, but I just, just sent that to David. So I don't know if he can pull it up.
I have it, Dr. Michaels. I was waiting for Pam to, okay, so.
Okay. I mean, I can go briefly through that, but before we do that, I wanted to see if, since it is five o'clock, I wanted to see if Dr. Lehman or Mary Lehman wanted to go first, just because I don't want her to be given short shrift and.
Sure, sure, Kathy. I, Dr. Michaels, I thank you for that. I will be as brief as possible. Because actually this wonderful group that I've so enjoyed being a part of this year has heard me talk a little bit about this bill before. It seems like the other day Pamela, that I was giving the post-session wrap up on, on which environmental bills of interest to this group passed in the General Assembly in, in our 2021 session and which didn't and will be brought back next year. And I did talk about my artificial turf bill. The 2021 bill number is a House Bill, what is it? Five, or I'm sorry, 857. And I did send a link, I don't know if you noticed that, right as, right before we were transitioning from the food discussion, I sent a link to the actual 2021 bill, the text of the bill. And that bill was the disposal piece that Diana talked about. And as she said, there are no laws nationwide. There, there are literally in all of the 50 states, in however many 3,000 plus counties across the US and countless municipalities, there are no rules, regulations or laws with the exception of New York City. And New York City has rules associated with, and this is its, its municipal athletic and recreation department, which owns hundreds of fields. It has procurement rules around artificial turf fields that just require that anyone bidding with the city to install a new turf field has to specify where it will go at the end of its life. And again, that's a, a rule that's evolved over time. It is not set in statute. And so what happened is my first session in Annapolis in 2019, activists like Kathy and Diana and others came to me and said, "Would you be interested in putting a, putting forward a bill on the disposal of artificial turf at the end of its roughly eight to 10-year life?" And I said, "Yes, I don't know much about it. I'm willing to learn." So four years later, I'm still working on that bill. It has evolved over time. But long story short, we're down to, you know, we started out trying to be a lot more prescriptive about how the field should be disposed of. That became too problematic because as Diana said, they're really on. That became too problematic because as Diana said, there really aren't any solid waste facilities in the state of Maryland capable of handling turf fields at the end of their lives. And very little is being done with recycling and repurposing. The industry will, you know, try to say that it's attempting to do that and there are evolving technologies to help with that, but they haven't gone very far. So where we are with the bill is just trying to create what we call a chain of custody, which is to say that manufacturers for fields already in the ground and users, which would include PGCPS and other school systems for new fields going forward once, if the bill becomes law, would have to document for the Maryland Department of Environment where those fields are located and anytime they're moved for any reason. So let's say in PGCPS, Eleanor Roosevelt players, athletes and their parents decide, you know what? We don't want this turf field anymore. We don't like it, you know, like the Ravens players, we're getting injured. We don't want to play on this. It's too hot. We want to go back to natural grass. And under this hypothetical situation, PGCPS says, okay, well, you don't want it. Laurel High School really wants a turf field. They've been waiting in line. We'll pick it up. It's only a few years old. It has several years of life left. We'll remove it and, and send it up to Laurel. In that scenario, PGCPS would have to document for MDE who removed the field, who hauled it away, where it went, and then who installed it. And then, you know, Laurel, in this hypothetical situation, keeps it a few years till it becomes about 10 years old and is worn out. And then PGCPS again, whether it replaces that field with another turf field or goes back to natural grass, would have to document for MDE when that field was removed and where it was taken. Was it sent to a landfill in Pennsylvania? Was it incinerated in Virginia? Were parts of it cut up by, you know, a company in Kentucky to make it into batting cages? Or was it a combination of those things? So that's all we're really trying to get at is where these fields are going at the end of their lives or in between, if that's the case. Because right now, again, there are no laws requiring that. That scenario Diana talked about where the Richard Montgomery Field ended up being used by a paintball field by a river in Baltimore County was not illegal because there are no rules, regulations or laws governing the movement of turf. So that's what I'm trying to get at and I'm hoping next year will be the charm. I did manage, last comment, I did manage to get both the artificial turf industry and the tire industry on board with the bill in, in 2021. It was just too late to make what we call the crossover deadline to get the bill from the House over to the Senate. So with that, I will stop and, you know, I can either take questions now or after Dr. Michaels talks. Thank you.
I don't know if there's that much, David, if you want to put what may be useful. I don't know how many of you are familiar with synthetic turf. So one of the issues that we've been coming up against is really interesting. I mean, most people know, most plastics that are of concern today, the single-use plastics, bags and stuff, because they use them every day, but very few people actually use synthetic turf. It's an enormous point source of plastic pollution. And that's part of what my presentation had focused on because of the waste aspect of it. But not a lot of people know what it is. So if you want to pull up my presentation just for a very quick, some quick visuals. And then we can, you know, go on to questions. So, so this is the first one. And of course, you know, it's a, synthetic turf is a plastic problem. And grass, as Diana said, is, is the gold standard and grass can be made to be durable. It's safer, no matter what the industry says or the legitimate research shows that synthetic turf. And the players, as Diana pointed out, are, say that synthetic turf is much harder on bodies and abrasive than grass. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this is just like a cross section of synthetic turf. So if you've never seen it, that looks, I mean, if you look at this, it looks like a, you know, some grass blades, right? Well, that's just green colored plastic film, filaments that are extruded from machinery. And an important part of that to note is that you've all probably heard of the PFAS forever chemicals. And if you think about it, for plastic fibers to be extruded from the machinery, if you actually think of how it's manufactured, if it's, it's hot when, when it's extruded. And it will stick to the machinery unless some kind of non-stick coating is added, either to the machinery or to the plastic. As it turns out, the PFAS chemicals, the fluorinated forever chemicals that you've been hearing about and that John Oliver just did a whole segment on, are added especially to synthetic fibers that are used in carpeting. And basically a synthetic turf is an enormous plastic carpet. And these fibers are, have PFAS chemicals and they've been found leaching out. And there's several industry publications that talk about using them in it. So there's an enormous amount of plastic and some of these chemicals in it. So this is, this is a cross section. So you have the plastic blades. Then you have, basically you have a rock base at the bottom. And then kind of that middle area is usually tire crumb. And tire crumb is a whole, the infill, the granulated infill to hold the blades up is a whole problem in and of itself. So if you go to the next slide. And just to give you kind of an idea of scale for what, a single one of your field would be the plastic equivalent. And they show black plastic bags there, but you know, maybe single use. 3.2 million plastic bags and about 46 million plastic straws. That's by, by, you know, by weight and volume. Okay, next slide. And I won't, I won't go too much into this. You know, there's huge problems with microplastics. You've already probably, all of you have heard of it. They've been found all through our food chain and our bodies and infants and infants poop most recently. So microplastic pollution is a huge problem. It's down in the Arctic everywhere. And next slide. You can see one of these synthetic, so this is a synthetic turf field. This is one of our highly counted, Walter Johnson High School, one of our, you know, great high schools in Montgomery County. This is their field. And you can see in the left picture, the synthetic turf blades are just breaking down. And you can just scoop it up. And so just think about where does this stuff get washed off to? Where is it going? So that's, that's a huge amount of plastic debris that's continuously being eroded off. And the estimates by the industry are a couple of tons of this plastic per year that's washed off of each one of these fields. So it's, next slide. So it's, it's kind of a Trojan horse for plastic pollution. And then this slide just shows the infills. The middle is the tire crumb. And then on the right-hand side is something called Envirofill, which is an oxymoron because it's basically sand, which is, you know, not quite as harmful as the tire crumb, which contains, you know, a myriad toxins, but they've coated it in plastic. So they took something, you know, not quite as bad and then they made it really bad. They made it into basically microbeads. And on the left is just granulated manufacturing rubber waste. So that's, that's what students are rolling around in. That's what's leaching out into the environment. Next slide. And here's just showing this middle one's drains to, drains to waterways. And on the right-hand side is just, is again, one of the high schools that's the perimeter drain. And just showing you can just scoop it out of the drains. Next slide. Again, this is an industry slide showing how much of the plastic fibers and the infill is lost per year and wondering where it goes. And basically they say, well, it goes essentially to the waterway through various means. Next slide. So next slide, I won't go through this. And just, just to note, the presentation I originally given was focused on stormwater permits. So it's so really important to note, the synthetic turf, all this, all this tire waste and all the plastic that you saw washing off is not sediment. It's a waste. It's a manufactured waste and it should be treated as such in stormwater permits. And currently it is not. Okay, next slide. Next slide. Oh, wait a minute. Stay on this one for just a second. So I, one point that I really want to make, I mean, in addition to being kind of a Pandora's box of pollutants, both the infills and the plastics, it's a Trojan horse for microplastic pollution. So if you have a grass field, the grass field is inherently beneficial. It oxygenates the air, cools the air and the soil filters the water and pollutants. And there's no, you know, if you, yes, if you add pesticides, herbicides to it, that may wash off, but you don't have to, but the grass and soil are inherently beneficial. But you, and, but you create a point source of this plastic carpeting that's shedding, you know, you know, hundreds of tons of plastic. And all of a sudden, it's like a Trojan horse taking these microplastics to places where they never would have otherwise been. So that's a really important point to keep in mind that everywhere you put one of these synthetic turf fields, it's a place where plastic pollution never would have originated from otherwise. So you're introducing a huge point source of plastic pollution wherever you put it. Okay, next slide. And just to show how it piles up, it's not, no matter what the industry says, and they finally admitted it's not. They like to say it's recycled. It's not. It piles up. And there's been many articles that have been written about the problems and the PFAS pollution. Next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, yeah, so I took out a bunch of it. So this is just a graphic that we lay on the right-hand side. So everything that Diana and I have told you, just the tip of the turf berg, those are all pictures of dumped synthetic turf fields. There was a, University of Virginia dumped their synthetic turf field when they went to replace it. That's the other point. They need to be, they disintegrate and need to be replaced every eight to 10 years. And nobody knows where to put them. They can't be recycled. And so they pile up and University of Virginia put it on the side of a mountain and then kept moving it around on the mountain when they got caught. Next slide. And just to, this phthalates, antioxidants, plasticizers, heavy metals in the plastic. And then if tire crumb is used, fine particulates, neurotoxins, which is lead, carcinogenic, polysuccinic, hydrocarbons that are also found in car exhaust and wildfire smoke, hormone disrupting chemicals, phthalates in particular, volatile organic compounds such as dende and then aquatic toxins such as zinc and the recently identified 6PPV quinine, which is highly toxic to salmon. And increasingly, it looks like to other fish and potentially to humans as well. Next slide. And then this is a slide that, so hopefully all this will be sent out to you. This is part of a number of resources that you can use. And I think that's it. Go to the next slide. Yeah, okay. So sorry, I was trying to make that quick, but I thought some visuals might be helpful.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Michaels. That was there, actually very helpful. And we will share your presentation. And in fact, I'll let folks know that Dr. Michaels let me know that typically the presentation is two hours and we were asking for a very short period of time.
Well, the discussion is, you know, actually the presentation is usually, I mean, short as it needs to be. But the last discussion that we had, it was a California, with Zoom, people, people are, you know, discussing all over, all over the world, actually, on this particular issue.
Yeah, I can jump back in. I have to say, since we started our nonprofit a couple of years ago, after almost a decade of advocacy, just scrambling as civic activists, we've had so many people reach out to us from across the world, from Japan, from Zimbabwe, from all over the Netherlands, they're big, this is in the Netherlands and Europe, from Colombia and all over the US, including in Washington State, which as it turns out, the Pacific Northwest grows 90% of the Kentucky bluegrass in the US. And so it's supporting farmers, you know, it's supporting farmers instead of petroleum processors. It's, there are so many aspects that relate to environmental longevity and wisdom. So again, I would be thrilled to take any questions or I put my email in there, I put some links in there. We've got mountains more information, but we hesitate to swamp. And I just want to thank Delegate Lehman again and your group for letting us, letting us take your time in this afternoon. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Does anyone want to put, put up their Zoom hand to ask a question before we, we close the meeting? I, I do want to say with this will, this will certainly be part of the materials subgroup, but there's an intersection here with stormwater management subgroup because that has been a lot of the discussion around some of the, our fields in PGCPS has been around stormwater management. So we're going to come back. We're going to be using this data from many angles and of course, the health angle. I see Mr. Stefanelle's hand is up. I think you're on mute, Mr. Stefanelle.
Sorry about that. This is for Kathleen and Diane. From a maintenance standpoint, we've tried over the years to find a way to create a football surface or playing field that's durable enough to handle the traffic that we have in a typical high school. How do we do that without a turf field?
So I'd like to try to answer that. We have established a turf grass advisory panel with three key athletes, three key components on it. There's the turf grass producers international, whose, you know, awareness on this issue is extremely high because they're saying turf grass grow, go in where their members used to be able to put grass. So it's a commercial interest for them. The second one is turf grass, National Turf Grass Evaluation Program. And that's in Green, Greenbelt, right? In Greenbelt, Maryland? Have I got that right, Kathy? And that's a fellow named Kevin Morris. He's also a member of our advisory panel. And the third person is the communications director for the, this is a mouthful, Washington Turf Grass Seed Commission. And those three organizations are, we've really asked them to focus on helping us create not only, I mean, I feel like we've got a good message on why this is a problem. And the next piece we need is to say, and here's a solution. Typically, Mr. Stefanelle, the issue is that grass fields are thrown, they're rolled out as sod. Maybe there's a little bit of aeration, a little bit of time for rooting and then kids go at it. And whereas with synthetic turf, in order to get to buy a turf field, you have to agree to the warranty and program requirements. So there's a reason it costs, you know, a million or a million six. You have to put in four feet of drainage and you have to put in fencing most of the time. Grass fields don't get that kind of protection. You have to put in all kinds of, there are so many warranty conditions on, you can't have band drill on there and limits on what you can do and how you can do it. Grass fields, nobody's doing that. And in part, this is a failure on behalf of the grass community because there's, synthetic turf is a plug and play. It's the same everywhere. It's plastic. You stick it down and you require people to do things. And then in eight years, you take it out and just like heroin, you got to buy another one because it's too expensive to go back. Grass fields are different based on geography, on soil, on climate, on types of use. And, you know, a grass field will talk to you. It will say, I'm in failure. This isn't working in a way that communicates to the community. People don't like to be told their game is canceled. So I understand why people say, look, I want a field for my kid to play on. I want him to be recruited or her to be recruited to a D1 school. You're not going to get recruited with a three-time ACL tear and the injury rates are significantly higher. You're not going to get recruited if you've got three concussions. And, and you know, you can't think straight in your interview. So we don't have the kind of answer that I wish we had, but there are so many examples of, I mean, think about the soccerplex. If, I think most people on here are old enough to remember Hurricane Irene, six inches in six hours. The soccerplex was run at the time by Jared Minnick, who won national awards for having created a version of a sand capped field. Now, the sand allows it to drain incredibly quickly. So there was a women, like a national women's tournament that had to be moved from, I think it was University of Maryland, to the soccerplex in Gazersburg, Germantown, it's right here in Montgomery County. And their, their fields that would work were the three sand capped fields and the three synthetic turf fields. And the synthetic turf works because you are required And the synthetic turf works because you are required to spend the money to put in a drainage system that will allow the field to succeed. Nobody's requiring that for grass. So to say that the grass can't take it is, you know, one hand behind your back kind of comparison. It is not apples to apples. And that, back to your, your organic apples in the cafeteria, it's not fair to say grass can't take it, therefore we gotta go in. So my pitch to most people is just to say, give it a cha- do it right and give it a chance. And if, if it still won't work, fine, go with synthetic turf, God bless you. But if you go with synthetic turf, there's no going back. A, a system like, uh, Prince George's County Public Schools is not going to be able to for, afford to do what the Ravens did. They tried two synthetic turf fields over seven years, which is very quick. And they took them out because there were injury rates that their players were, were unwilling to sustain.
And went back to grass.
And went back to grass, yes, sorry. They didn't put in a third one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what, can I just jump in, just, uh, when you talked about the soccerplex, the soccerplex is like a living laboratory. And so one of the things I was going to ask is if you consulted with the soccerplex. Because, so like Diana mentions, they, they have fields there that, that are almost rain out proof. And so she mentioned that storm where they were able to use their, um, their grass fields, the ones that they had basically installed. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Dr. Michaels, you're going out, you're freezing up.
Am I?
You're freezing up.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. So at the soccerplex, um, so those, the three synthetic turf fields they had, which they were going to install more and they have not for, for good reasons, um, actually started degrading. So shortly after that, you know, that historic rainfall, all of their, um, our rainy days, they started putting onto the grass fields and not the synthetic turf because the synthetic turf was, uh, was degrading to the point where it was, um, pooling. So synthetic turf doesn't, it, it, it degrades and then it doesn't hold up in terms of.
And the other, the other issue about, um, synthetic versus grass is that, okay, so if there are circumstances under which grass truly cannot work because the traffic is just too heavy, like in an urban school that has only, you know, 2,500 kids in a single field. There are times when you cannot use that synthetic turf field because it's, you know, heat index of, it's 90 degrees out, heat index of 105 because you're in an urban environment and you're going to put kids in pads and tell them to run and bash into each other. You can't use that field. So how is that any less of an impediment to a selling point than a grass field that, um, you know, even with the sand cap, even with support, um, is, is occasionally unable to be used? The other thing is because grass is so much cheaper as a new field, I mean, even if, you know, bells and whistles, the whole thing, $400,000 tops, it is so much cheaper to re-sod a grass field on top of that new installation cost than it is to run a synthetic turf field at 1.2, 1.4, 1.6. And if you're looking at the cost over the life of a grass field, that's a 20-year window. The synthetic turf industry, it's like not telling you about the balloon payment on your mortgage. They don't tell you that after eight or 10 years, you gotta come up with another 800, $900,000 to replace that sucker. Plus, if you're going to be responsible, the disposal cost.
If I could just answer Sam's question really quickly, Pamela, very quickly. Sam, after the 2019 session, um, well, we do a series, District 21 team that I'm a part of in Annapolis, we do a series of what we call post-session meetings around the district with homeowners associations, civic associations, Rotary Clubs. And, um, when I presented at the College Park Rotary Club and talked about my, uh, turf bill, I had several, uh, faculty from the University of Maryland that were attending that meeting from their Department of Agriculture approach me and say, you know, we love this idea. You know, of course they're biased, these, these folks are natural grass people. But the University of Maryland has a very well-regarded agronomy department. I actually have a friend I grew up in Greenbelt, whose dad got his PhD in agronomy from College Park. And I, I would encourage you maybe to, um, consult with them and, and ask, ask their opinion on, um, you know, to, to look at the various challenges you have with, with.
There's also an organization called Mastma Mid-Atlantic, um, Sports Turf Managers Association. They do both kinds of fields. So they are truly, you know, a, a, an honest broker, if you will. So it's, um, Sports Turf Managers Association is a national organization. Then there's the Mid-Atlantic Sports Turf Managers Association.
And I, and I don't want you to say, I mean, I'm not, I, I would prefer to have grass fields. I understand, I, um, the benefits, but we're up against the community, we have to run to at least two football practices, JB and a varsity, if not, and probably two soccer practices. And then the community wants to use the field. I don't have downtime for the grass to recuperate. That's what's driving us to put into our fields. If we could come up with an alternative, um, maybe we could have the, we could convince the public that this is the way to go. I'm all for it. I just, uh, a school system of our size, with the number of students we have, we're, we're up against it. It's, it's similar to Sean's alternative financing to build schools. We'd have to build schools in a way we don't want to have to build schools, but we're up against it because we can't, we don't have the funding to support the, uh, or the population that we currently have.
I, I would encourage you to talk to, um, I would encourage you to talk to Riley.
I'm willing to try to find a way to try to see if we can make.
Pilots are a great way to start. Find a community with a booster club or a coach or an AD who's, you know, who's got the same approach as you and saying, you know, I'd like to make this work, but I need support. And I'm not an agronomist, but University of Maryland was a land grant school, you know? I mean, there's a lot of room for especially a board of education level program to feed, um, high school students, just like they're feeding them into be electricians, to feed them into this industry because they're, they're going begging for young people coming into this industry. And there's money to be made, there's, you know, $80,000 to $150,000 a year as, as a gra- a support grad. Just on the phone with these folks the other day. And that's, that's sort of the average salary for somebody to come in and be a professional field manager. You can't have a lawn dog being a field manager. You've got to have somebody who understands rooting and soil, you know, composition and humidity and moisture levels and.
Yeah, and you're correct, but 20 years ago, we had a groundsman at every high school, which we no longer have.
Right.
But that person, that, that was their responsibility was ma- maintain the, the sport fields.
Yeah.
And that would, they were professionals at doing just that.
Right.
But just as synthetic turf was originally a premium product that was considered, you know, a status product among the pros. The pros have now made clear, I mean, the National Women's Soccer League sued FIFA because they were forced to play on synthetic turf while the men got grass. It's a, you know, it's a safety issue for them. So that sort of status issue has filtered down to the elite colleges and elite high schools. Meanwhile, the pros are like, get this stuff out of here. So I believe that it is slowly sinking down and the reality is coming true that the injuries, the heat, the cost, and the disposal, they're just too ugly. So the next aspect, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Stefanelle, we got to figure out how to make the grass work in a way that, that is functional. It could be down to things that I've seen at, at some schools in Montgomery County where you rotate, you, you get a big enough grass field that you can rotate or slide the thing over, you know, 150 feet either direction so that the goal mouth is over 150 feet and you've got, and then you can slide it back the other way and give a little bit of rest to those high traffic areas and also rotate them 90 degrees. That does require larger, larger footprint. I'm not an expert in that area, but there are sort of practical on-the-ground solutions for this kind of thing. And also breaking up, um, practice areas so that even the small drills, everybody wants to congregate on the middle of the field. Go do it over in the corner, go, you know, go wear that corner out behind, behind the goalpost.
Yeah. Thank you, Diana. I see we have Jamie Austin has her hand up. You want to go ahead, Jamie? Uh, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. Ms. Conway, can you help us with any studies that you're aware of for watering these grasses, especially in wake of drought conditions? Any suggestions that you may have, any studies you can point us to? In the event that we were to have a, a full, let's just drought, how do we get around, uh, you know, watering these grasses? And, and how do we stay in compliance if that were to occur?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Ms. Austin. There are a couple of aspects to that. One is that, um, as we face climate change, synthetic turf fields have to be watered in order to be playable because they reach, you know, 160, 180 degrees. And the way that watering them creates a humidity spike, it delays the game and it also, um, changes the conditions of play because it becomes slippery. So sometimes synthetic turf has to be wa- watered and the water, um, relief only lasts 15 minutes. So in terms of watering grass, um, this turf grass advisory panel we've pulled together has, um, the National Turf Grass Evaluation Program in Greenbelt, Maryland, um, has developed a, a, a panoply of, I'm told, this is not my expertise, what I'm told are really resilient grasses that can not only take higher traffic and are also much more drought tolerant. There's a point at which a living thing must have water. I mean, that's just the way that is. But the other thing to bear in mind is, and this is not granularly helpful when you've got to pay a water bill, but if you're putting in synthetic turf, you're adding hot, dry heat to the environment, which is only going to make all of our, all of our water problems worse. And you've also sealed up that soil so that there's no way any water that does come down from the sky can ever go into recharge to give you a water table that allows your water, um, your, 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 your SSC to, to have, um, you know, affordable water rate. So it's a bigger picture in that sense. It doesn't help you with, you know, your school paying your water bill. But there are grasses coming that are more and more resilient. The grass turf, turf grass industry, um, is highly aware, especially in the, the, um, center of the U.S. of the Southwest where they're losing, um, a lot of local battles where, um, communities are saying, okay, you gotta have grass in order to be your homeowners association, but you can put in plastic and get credit for putting in plastic because it doesn't need watering. So there's, there's a high awareness.
Alternative infills, you might want to mention too.
They're becoming much more proactive in communities to say, actually, grass is your friend if you're worried about water.
And Diana, can you, uh, can you all hear me? Yeah. So the other, the other issue is though, as, as, um, as everybody starts going away from the tyrochrome because of the hu- the huge tox, um, toxicity and microplastic issues, fires are essentially extra toxic, micro, you know, um, microbe, micro medical. The alternative, um, quote unquote, organic infills require watering. So, you know, I've been told, for example, at my local high school, which is, um, which got me into this to begin with, that they sometimes have to water, um, they have a cork coconut infill, um, and they sometimes have to water it for 48 hours straight. And they didn't install an irrigation system and they, and they're really pissed off that they weren't told that they need to install the irrigation system for the synthetic turf. Because they have to do it with, they have to get out there with a lot of manpower and move around sprinklers and, and just water the thing for, you know, sometimes 48 hours or more straight. So, so it's, uh, so it's kind of a red herring, uh, that, um, that, you know, just grass needs water. The synthetic turf does as well for the heat and also just keep it within compliance.
And Dr. Michaels is right because not only, um, so if it's too hot on the tyrochrome infill and it's too toxic, the industry is trying to come up with all kinds of alternatives, the plastic that she showed you in that slide, and also a lot of plant-based infills, which is what we call, or they're organics. They call it organic, we call it plant-based because it's got all kinds of other crap in there that is not organic. Um, and those are like a Goldilocks product. If they're too dry, they're dusty and slippery. And literally the kids like cough and get dust, get dust reactions and allergic reactions. If they're too wet, they clump and get moldy. Oh, and by the way, if it's, if there's snow or, or icy rain, they freeze up into clumps. So in all those circumstances, either you can't play or you need a lot of time, energy and manpower and money to go out and fix those individual positions. So the industry is constantly trying to catch up with all the defects we and others are pointing out. But one of them, uh, Ms. Austin, as you pointed out, is the water issue. And Kathy's right, the stuff has to be watered and has to be watered just right. So it's moist but not moldy, but moist enough not to be dry and slippery and, and dusty.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I see that Mr. Matlock and Delegate Lehman still their hands up. So I think I'm very fortunate to, to have Mr. Stefanelle and Mr. Matlock together in this conversation. And, um, it was, you know, Mr. Matlock, would you like to, to go? And Delegate Lehman, did you have any final words on the topic? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Matlock.
No, I was going to point out, I mean, we, we are right now in, in, in the process of, of looking at a, a ton of turf fields, new stadiums that, uh, the school district and the, the communities are, um, might point out very much, uh, demanding. And I get, I get more, most of my, uh, inquiries that I get about, um, uh, facilities now are, are about these, uh, football fields and stadiums. And, you know, it does cost us an enormous amount of money to put the proper drainage into a facility, whether it's a turf field or it's a, um, uh, a, a grass field. So we're, we're trying to, that we drain them properly, we get proper drainage and all the things necessary to make the field work. Because if they don't, if we don't do that, then we have our issues. But what I wanted to figure out, and, and I, and I was, I was going to ask the question, I'd heard about some of these alternative infills, uh, the organic infills, that sort of thing. And that they were a little bit less toxic, um, because I, 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 I feel for what, 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 um, uh, what Sam is saying. We don't really have the manpower that we once had or the, or the funding that we once had, uh, to take care of the fields as well as we'd like to. And, and that's not saying that there isn't a cost to, to the synthetics. I'm, I'm, I, having to deal with the budget of replacement, I'm very aware that they have to replace it every 10 years. It costs us a lot of money. So, um, and as a former athlete, I've gotten those burns sliding across the field on, you know, after a tackle or, or something like that. So I've, I've, I've had those type of injuries. I get why the fields are not exactly, I, especially when your head hits it, there's no give. And so I understand that, um, and I would like to have a safe and durable alternative. And is there, uh, a, a work group or, uh, an organization that we can go to? It can problem, that could give us the necessary information and maybe cost comparisons, um, that we could then sort of roll out to the public? Because it's not just us, the school system, uh, internal staff that needs to be sold. It's also the, uh, the communities that are looking for what I'll call equity. And when they see, you know, their, their rival school has a brand-new turf field with a painted, you know, with the, with the logo in the middle and it's got a weird color and all that stuff, they want it too. And so we're trying to, you know, I'm willing to, to say, look, we want to give you a better field from a safety and, and playability standpoint, but again, we're fighting the equity argument as well. So, you know, I'm, I'm laying all those things out there because if there are any organizations that we can go to that can provide us with those kinds of comparisons, information that we can then take to our public to say, these are your alternatives when we start designing these fields, you know, these are, these are your ups and your downs. What do you want? We can, we can, we can then get that kind of, uh, we can give them ability to make up, um, an informed decision about what, what they want to put in at their school.
Uh, Mr. Matlock, you have identified exactly what we have run up against and which is why I was so surprised. This has taken me as many years of my life as it has to really advocate for this, that parents, parents and community members, they want to come and see that football game. They want to come and see that soccer and lacrosse game. It's, and don't tell me it's canceled, then go fix it and go find out, you know, how you can make it so it doesn't have to be canceled. I get it. And, and the synthetic turf industry has done a great job of coming out and saying, we can fix your problem. Everybody loves a good capital campaign, you know, for the kids, a million bucks, we can do this. And then we're quote, done. What that really means is we're kicking it down the road, we're kicking the can down the road, the plastic can down the road. And the other parents, the other taxpayers, the other PTA members are going to have to come up with the money to maintain this thing that nobody budgeted for, the money to replace it that nobody budgeted for. As anything environmental, the classic problem here is that our argument is more complicated. They just say, we got this plastic field, put it in, give us a million bucks, we'll go away, you'll be happy, game over. We have to explain heat, cause toxicity, injury and disposal. That's already five times more things than they have to say. So what I've tried to do, what we at Safe Healthy Playing Fields have tried to do is really kind of goose the grass folks, whether it's Turf Grass Producers International, whether it's Sports Turf Managers Association, whether it's, um, some of the national turf grass organizations that are trying to create a checkoff program. And that's a national program that gets all the producers to contribute money. So if you remember beef, it's what's for dinner, or goat milk, or pork, the other white meat. Those are all marketing programs that were put together by a checkoff. meat, those are all marketing programs that were put together by a checkoff program. All those marketers, all those producers from around the country agreed to sign up for, um, this, this, um, campaign. They all put in money and suddenly this research team and this marketing team has tens of millions of dollars to put out campaigns like that. The grass industry is in the middle of trying to do that. They're close, but it's a 50 plus one. They gotta get 50% of their members plus one. And they're just trying to make sure because a lot of farmers tend to be, get the government out of my business, don't give me another tax, you know? So again, our argument is more complicated. I, I feel like it's like cigarettes, like it's coming, I just don't know what the body count has to be before we get there. And so having people like Delegate Lehman, having people like Dr. Michaels and having people like you all and, um, Pamela Boozer Strother, is I got that right? Um, to lead organizations and efforts like this is just part of that, that work. Um, it's not an easy answer. It can be done. There are very few circumstances where grass truly cannot take it and synthetic turf is truly cheaper. I mean, even if you have to re-sod, it's still cheaper and safer and cooler and softer and better for your environment, better for your kids, better for your budget. Um, it just has to be managed. Um, anyway, I apologize, I keep going on.
Well, we, we really appreciate it. I'm looking at the time, it's 5:46 and I, I thank you to everyone who stayed and, and listened live. Um, and of course we'll promote the recording, but, um, Diana and Kathleen, this, and Mary, this has been incredible information to share and for us to navigate. Um, you know, I, I definitely, I think some folks know I have a little bit of a, a bias on this because of my shock of when I was on the Northwestern High School field for the first time, it was for Sunday afternoon NFL flag football for, for students who were elementary, middle school age. My son was playing and I, we could, we could not breathe. And I, I couldn't understand, I was like, this is what our high school kids are playing football and the track team is running in this heat. And then we came home and my son's shoe was filled with something. And I'm like, what is your shoe filled with? And I dumped it and it was the, the tire pellets. His shoe was filled with it. So hundreds and hundreds of kids took those pellets from Northwestern High School and put the, through, I'm dumping them out in the driveway into, into our yard. So I was, I woke up, you know, those moments where you're like, how have I been around for so long and didn't know something? Synthetic turf was one of my moments. So, um, I, uh, I, I want, you know, I'm, I'm motivated for us to explore this and, and we know, and, and I've already expressed, I know that this isn't an easy one. This is going to take the entire community of our school system, our athletic department and our climate action students working together through this. Um, but we couldn't do it if we didn't have the baseline information. And, and thank you for your years of work in Montgomery County, the nation, sharing it with us.
I, I'm so thrilled to do this. And as an equity issue, I should have added, you know, minority children tend to have much higher blood levels in their, blood lead levels, excuse me, li, yeah, BLL, blood lead levels, because they tend to come from, uh, lower income housing, which often has still the old lead painted it, or they're coming from lower income communities that have, um, lead contamination in the soil. Synthetic turf, especially with tires, has lead in it. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC have said there is no safe level of lead exposure. If you already have elevated lead levels, all it does is pile on. It doesn't come out of you, it piles on. It's like mercury, if you eat, you know, it, it bioaccumulates in your body and the younger you are, the higher the exposure levels, the more brain damage. And the CDC has said the only strategy for equity on lead is prevention and that any, quote, safety threshold that somebody is selling you is, and then this is their word, illusory. So as an equity issue to say, oh, we want synthetic turf like they do, you know, this is not an equity issue and it's not, this is not an equity solution. And it's also not an equity solution in terms of money. That money should be going into something else than plastic.
I think you're right, the equity, we, you know, we are driven, the school system just released our new strategic plan. It's entirely equity driven. So we, we are asking these questions and diving in, in ways that we, we, that was not our, the directive before. And, and I'm really proud of that, that we've headed in that direction. And, and also this work group, um, our core principles, uh, health, health is a driving principle. So we will, we layer in health impacts on everything that we're working on as well. So, um, I think, you know, I think I will, uh, wrap it up here and just, you know, thank everyone again. And I know this conversation will continue through at least two gr, work subgroups. So you may be hearing from the sub, subgroups, um, to provide additional information. And it sounds like, uh, possibly, you know, anything you can share that, that, uh, Mr. Stefanelle, Mr. Matlock asked for resources, you know, we could share those directly or, you know, directly with them or we can assist with that. Um, but we will be inviting everyone who has served as a guest panelist for this entire , uh, work group, uh, process will be invited back into the process of, of review. So we will be seeing, we will be seeing you again if you have time to spend with us on the review process.
Well, thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um, so I'll say, I'll say goodnight and, uh, we'll, I'll look forward to our meeting in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you. For such.